Thursday, October 12th, 2023, Board Study Session Facilities Master Planning Continued. And ask for a roll call to establish forum, please.
Clerk Osborne.
Present.
Member Perry. Member Malcheski. President Vickers.
Here.
And Member Kelly has not yet arrived.
Okay, we'll ask our student rep to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a motion, please, to adopt our agenda.
Second.
Any changes or additions to the agenda?
No changes.
Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All board members on favor? I oppose. Carrie's four oh. Thank you. We will begin our study session as we did. I think it was effective the last time that we did that where we will have the presentation first and then have public comment. And if you noted in what was sent to us that we can make comments by section or not comments, ask questions by section, and then we will have public comment and then we can have board discussion. Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, President Vickers, members of the board, community. Tonight, we bring you our fifth study session related to our facilities master plan update. As a brief reminder, last study session held on September 28th was solely focused on the high school pool. So now we're bringing back the rest of the planned project updates for your consideration feedback. And then tonight, what would be really helpful for staff's purposes is if maybe this occurs at the end is we start talking about the prioritization of the project so we can start mapping out with the available resources we have, how they could fall within our tenure plan. The way the presentation is going to work is Ryan will review the updates at each site. And after, as was mentioned, after each section, we'll pause for discussion, clarifications, and questions. In relation to the proposed improvements that you'll see tonight for the early childhood learning, such as the preschool and transitional kindergarten, we also have Director of Early Learning Kimberly Johnson here and Dr. Mayberry, who can address any potential programmatic questions. And if you have any design-related questions, we also have a representative from Runa, Runo Clarks in our audience, and that's Mr. Alvin Flores here for us. And I think it's also important to note, as we go through this and our master plan, a lot of it, you're not going to see it called out, but the full intent of any time that we modernize or build new facilities, it would be with the goal in mind to help offset our carbon footprint on our way to be carbon neutral by 2030. So those decisions, as far as our specifications and designs, those are down the road, but that would be the full intent. And with that, in today's world, comes with dollars tied from the federal government. And we've talked about that with the Inflation Reduction Act and what that could look like. And that would be in addition to state matching funds. So we still have a lot of different sources that we're trying to pull together. And as we work through the prioritization of our master plan, we'll start lining those out before we bring it back for action either in October or November of this year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zeta, and he's going to take us through the proposed updates.
Thank you, Jeff. Starting with Elmore Elementary School, the program needs identify include the expansion of the transitional kindergarten program to have two conforming classrooms, modernize the existing kindergarten classrooms so that all three classrooms are 1,350 square feet and include an attached student restroom. We also heard that there is a need to create a preschool facility, and there is a need for a larger kitchen that can accommodate the increased needs of the food service program. This is a site plan of Elmore Elementary School. It is a 10-acre site located at the intersection of Coast Highway and the school State Park Road. Zooming in on the slide, here's in a large view, identifying the proposed improvements based on the needs identified. Starting with the TK kinder classroom scope shown on the top right of the screen, the proposal modernizes existing 20s classrooms space to provide three 1,350-square-foot kindergarten classrooms, each with their own attached restroom. Currently, there are two classrooms that conform, and the third classroom is a standard classroom. So this would bring all three up to conforming. Classrooms 24, 25, and 26, seen on the middle of the screen with the TK callout. The proposal would combine those three spaces to create two additional 1,350-square-feet classrooms, each with attached restrooms to be used for TK rooms. Site improvements to this area to support outside learning, eating, and play are included within the project's scope of work. Next, to address the preschool facility needs, the existing 50s classroom building shown in blue to the left of the screen is identified to be removed and replaced with a new single-story building. The new building provides for three preschool classrooms, each similar to a TK kinder classroom in size and function. The location provides for the ability to have a dedicated drop-off and play area for the preschool program. So you can see the adjacency to the roundabout traffic circle there. That's also utilized by the admin office and kindergarten area. Also included within the building are two standard 960-square-foot classroom spaces, student restrooms, and a kitchen facility. Due to the universal meal program and the increase in scratch cooking, a new kitchen facility is proposed that can meet the current and future needs to prepare and serve student meals. Size and function of the proposed kitchen would be similar to what is also proposed at Top of the World Elementary School. Lastly, site improvements are identified to be included within this Elmore plan would be design elements such as field, playground, and garden areas as potential areas of focus for project design. The estimated construction costs have been reduced by approximately $4 million as a result of a reduction in the scope of work. The second story was removed from the proposed new classroom building and is shown as a single-story 8,970-square-foot building. This concludes the portion of the presentation for the Elmore site, and we are happy to pause for board questions.
Can I ask questions?
Yes, so I actually have some questions about the pre-K program. Generally speaking, I have my own opinion about, you know, the sort of value, potential value in doing that. But I'm wondering, does the district have a kind of vision about pre-K education as it relates to the rest of the program that lends itself to understanding the facility's plan here?
Hi. Yeah, we would like to create a pre-readiness preschool program to really develop and get our students ready for TK in kindergarten. When we look through our community task force and through our EDI results, we see that some of our students aren't prepared. And so if we could create some sort of preschool program that really focuses on developmental and pre-academic skill sets and gets the students used to the structure of a school day and social interactions, it would be very helpful.
So is it corollary to that? I mean, I think the idea of doing integrated preschool is great, but in terms of the community plan and your research, is the issue that there aren't enough spots in town that we just want to integrate it with all of the other programs because it's better for our education? Or that there are other reasons that perhaps people haven't been interested in this gives us an opportunity for outreach? I'm just wondering the reasons that we want to be part of that.
Yeah, I think there's multiple layers to that. First, we're not trying to take away from any of our community partners. We have really good relationships with them. We just want to kind of add to the options that parents have. But when we meet with our community task force, one of the issues that we hear from them and from parents is there's not enough full-day options. So we could offer that full-day option. And then another reason would be for our special education students because right now we don't have any inclusion opportunities for them unless we send them to one of our community partners. Some of them are faith-based, and so it doesn't really bode well to IEP students.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the Elmore plan?
Yes. So is the 1,350 square feet, is that the state guideline?
Okay.
Yes, it's for anything kindergarten and lower.
And lower, okay. And what are, so this is a lot of building at a site, you know, two pre-K, three TK, and three kindergartens. I mean, that's a lot of kids. And do our studies show that we're going to have that many children?
So actually, when you look at the proposed master plan updated itself, we're actually losing one standard classroom as it is. So even with stable enrollment, it would be sufficient. Now, we don't know when, what our numbers will be five, six, seven years from now. But this does include some facility buffering and all the design elements related with how the rooms are used and the programs go in place. That would occur as we're getting into the design of the actual building itself. Because until then, we don't know the exact timing of the projects, and that has relocation of staff implications. It has design implications, even materials and technology. So this doesn't plan for necessarily growing enrollment, more of growing programs and supports. That's the highest level that a facilities master plan can cover.
And, you know, this is a lot of expense. What are other districts in Orange County doing to provide, you know, so many more classrooms?
So just to clarify, as far as Kinder and TK, it's not more, it's actually not more classrooms. It's just maintaining what we have.
Right, and we think we're going to have three full kindergartens?
We currently have three kindergarten classrooms, and then we're expecting to add a second TK classroom next year because this one's full. We'll see if the enrollment comes in. So next year, if enrollment stays, we would have three Kinder classrooms and two TK classrooms.
And then we would expect to have, what, four pre-K?
There's, there's three there. And so that would, that'd be moving it from from Top of the World and using the classrooms, it's basically the same space we have now. So we'd have to move them somewhere else. So we're moving that program from Top of the World to here. We're adding, we're adding the preschool classroom. So the addition is the gen ed preschool classroom. So we can be in compliance with the inclusive nature of special education IEPs. Those two are additional. So two additional preschool classrooms would be new, but not the TK and Kinder.
Okay, but what are other districts doing to add all these? Maybe it isn't as many as I thought, but what are they doing to add these classrooms?
Most districts around us have already have preschools at their, some of their elementaries. So they're already in compliance with students with IEPs or one of the few that don't.
Have they been doing extra building like this?
No, they already, there are existing buildings that they have space for.
So have they used classrooms that, because of declining enrollment?
Well, I mean, there's different options for schools, right? So you could take the existing classrooms that aren't up to 1,350, and you could, one option is not be at the state standard for Kinder, TK, and preschool classrooms and make them smaller without bathrooms, right? And so we have our special education classroom up at Top of the World has that right now. Creates obviously some challenges for them, you know, to take kids. You have a teacher, maybe an aide, and you're trying to take them up to a bathroom, and you have to walk them out. So, you know, that is an option if you want to keep it below the state standards or not up to those, as long as it's not due construction. But correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but as long as it's not due construction, we could put them in a smaller classroom without a bathroom. Yes.
Yeah, to kind of clarify, the size requirements, en suite restrooms, those are really requirements to receive state funding that's associated with the facilities improvements for the TK and preschool programs. If you don't have a conforming classroom, you wouldn't be eligible for that money. So for facilities master planning purposes, I think for planning purposes, we want to make sure our facilities are planned to be totally conforming, and then we can get access all available revenue along the way. If revenue becomes not available over time, then decisions can be made at that point whether or not you want to do full 1,350 or convert a 960-square-foot classroom. But at this point, because we're planning for the absolute best and optimal program, I think it's important that you put the exact square footage that the state requires so you'd be eligible for at least the funding.
And I think that's the point that I'd make is that, to your question, and repair the other districts, the state recognizes that other districts need to do this work as well. So that's why they put half a billion dollars into the fund in order to pay for TK expansion and Kinder expansion. So we're not alone. Those schools that are newer, like many districts, like many schools in Irvine, for example, they already have those programs built out. But they also, if their infill requirements, like modernization, which is what we have obviously listed on ours, they'll be able to access some of that funding as well. So everybody in the state is adding TK. It's dependent on what your infrastructure has currently and what that means for your schools in order to accomplish that. There are some districts that don't have any TK programs that were community-funded that are trying to figure out what they have to do, and they may have to build full programs because they don't have any rooms to, for that, to that end. So again, the state clearly recognizes that we're not alone. I mean, there's many that are like us. That's why they're putting half a billion dollars towards that construction.
So what percentage would be state-funded of what we plan to do?
That would, to be determined.
We don't know. Okay.
We wouldn't know that at this point. The details of how that money is going to be released is not yet fully explained. What we had been told originally was that there was going to be significant amounts of funding provided to at least one project per school district. And then beyond that, it would be based on a kind of a more needs-based approach. So obviously, what you would do is put your most expensive project on the list, and more than likely, you know, we wouldn't be in line for additional funding because they use other criteria, you know, such as, you know, low-income students, et cetera, when they're making those decisions related to funding some of those things. It's not an equal across the board per pupil, which, but in this instance, they recognize they're adding another grade level. There is an expectation they're going to have to give funding to everybody at least equally in some way in the beginning. But we're still waiting on the specifics. But yeah, that's why we need to kind of try to get ourselves in line sooner rather than later because, you know, we all know once the money is spent, it'll be gone.
And I also wondered how parents are going to, will feel about their pre-K students coming to Elmore if their other students are TOW.
Hard for us to answer how they would feel. We already do that now. I mean, we already have programs of that nature now where students who are in preschool, who might, you know, attend whose kids, you know, larger, older students are at Elmore and their younger ones at Top of the World. So that happens now. So where students are split between two sites. In some cases, if parents request that, of course, we allow folks to transfer within the school district.
We had that for years with CLC.
Right.
But Dee, we had that for years with CLC. If they chose to have kids at CLC, because the siblings might be at Elmore.
And TK was by itself at Elmore for probably 10 years, I think.
President Vickers, are we still in just question format? I want to be really careful not to be in board discussion amongst each other, even though I have lots of things.
Questions, yes.
Okay. And I had a couple, either for Mr. Zeta or later for the architects when we're in board discussion. One was on this building that we show pre-K, and what's the age of the building? Because my sidewalks on the facilities subcommittee said that that's one of our most aged facilities.
I believe it was constructed in the 50s. We'd have to look at the plans, get the specific date. But it is one of the older, or oldest buildings on the campus. It's a wood-framed building. It's not largely complex. It's a single-story. It doesn't have an attic space. When you look up, the roof structure is the roof. It does have some small foundational issues where a little bit of settling going on. So when we look at that campus and we look at buildings, that would be a good building to modernize or to replace.
Okay. And then as a follow-up question, we show two classrooms and three PK classrooms. But if in board discussion we agree that that's the most aged building, I know there's portables on the field right now. I call them the pandemic portables. We have two classrooms there. From my notes, we have science there. We have music. It's in the portable at the end, potentially in the current scenario. And I'm not sure we're art because now we have a TOSA. We have a person dedicated to that site that the board approved. So in my mind, I see art and I see science and I see music existing in this space as well. I don't think the board has intention of keeping portables on our campus into the 10 years into the future. Unless you guys do, I just don't see them on the plans. So I'm confused because I don't know where our existing.
So you're asking where, you're asking which classrooms those would be moved to? Is that your question?
Yes. I only see two classrooms and I see three PK. And so I'm not sure where those programs are right now or if those would fit in here. Even regardless of what happens with PK, I'm just trying to understand this space a little bit better.
We believe we could absorb, find ways to absorb the rest of those programs on campus in the current existing buildings.
Okay, in a standard-sized classroom. So no need for a special classroom like a science lab or Makerspace. Okay. All right, that answers.
Unless that was something of the board's interest. I mean, we could obviously convert one of those classrooms and make it a little bigger. There was an interest in making a Makerspace. But we can do that more in the design features, the general square footage is in classrooms. We could say, you know, let's add, you know, make another 1,350 and make it a, move that down a little bit and see if we can put it in there and add a Makerspace lab for science. That's something we definitely could do if that was an interest of the board.
Now, I had a couple other questions, but I wanted to defer to Dr. Kelly to make sure he's had a chance to speak for. On the garden or on the field improvements that are shown, there's a field improvement and a science garden. And I had a question whether it's capable to do field improvements but leave the existing garden in its existing space and connect it to the science garden. I know I got a lot of feedback about whether the existing Elmore Garden would be or need to be demoed to make room for a field improvement. And so that's a, something I have a strong question about.
You could. This is just simply giving a square footage allocation for improvement of the field space. What, where the garden would fall to optimize whatever the improvement looks like is up to the design point. Yeah.
And then we had talked as a board about kitchen modernizations. We had pretty strong majority on kitchen modernization. So I wanted to make sure that the size of the food service, I know you mentioned, Mr. Zeta, in your comments about scratch cooking, but I wanted to make sure it was sized appropriately to be able to provide dishwashing. Yes, that came up. I think all board members felt pretty strongly about that.
Well, and to answer your question, yes. So when we programmed this building here, it reflects the same square footage as Top of the World, which they have 3,000 square feet for their restroom and food service building. When we took the restroom portion off of it, I think it was around 1,800 or 2,000 square feet. So it was a significant increase in square footage that was similar to the Top of the World program that would allow for a full prep kitchen to be constructed along with providing for the queuing and the serving lanes to be able to efficiently serve those meals without, you know, impacting the students, you know, lunchtime.
I think to say it simply, both of the proposed new kitchens are larger than the existing kitchens are operating in and would have sufficient room for that. Yes.
All right. That was it. That was the end of my questions on Elmore. Thank you very much.
Any further questions before we move to the next?
I just want to confirm, I think you said that it would be all-day TK and pre-K kindergarten options.
Preschool, we would like to offer a full day. And then currently, we have the TK Extended Day Program that we're looking to start in January.
Okay, thank you.
We moved on to the next, Top of the World, please.
Okay, now we will review the program needs at Top of the World Elementary School. Significant needs include modernizing existing classroom space to create two 1,350-square-foot conforming TK classrooms that are connected to the existing kindergarten area, creation of a new lunch area that is adjacent to the kitchen and play area, and construction of a new kitchen and student restroom building. This is a site plan of Top of the World Elementary School. It is a 15-acre site accessed from Treetop Lane, the bottom left, and exits onto Mountain View Drive on the top. And there's an access point in the back garden area off Alpine Way. Zooming in on the site plan, here is an enlarged view of the campus. Starting with the TK needs, the plan modernizes existing classroom space located in Building C to create two 1,350-square-foot TK classrooms, each with an attached restroom. Included within the proposal are the site improvements to combine the TK rooms with the existing kindergarten space and enhancements to the play and eating areas. That can be seen in the bottom of the screen, the orange with the TK callouts, the two spaces. Next, to address the outside programming needs, the lunch area is proposed to be relocated to the location of the existing maintenance and student restroom building in the center of campus that can be seen in the blue. The result is a new lunch area that is adjacent to the play area and future kitchen. A larger kitchen and student restroom building is shown to be constructed that will meet current and future needs. The current kitchen is the only kitchen in the district that is not a full prep kitchen. It does not have open flame burners, exhaust hood, or a grease trap. The proposed kitchen will meet the large demand for school-provided meals that are both healthy and tasty. The building will support the district's goals to increase scratch cooking and provide the needed space to serve the students without long wait times that take away from their eating and play times. Site improvements that may be considered at the time of the projects include playground expansion, improvements to play fields, and outdoor learning areas. Some of that is shown here in this diagram. Moving to the cost slide, the total estimated construction costs remain unchanged and are identified to be approximately $6.9 million. With that, we will now pause again for board questions pertaining to Top of the World Elementary School master plan improvements.
Thank you, board members. Go ahead, Kelly.
Related to field improvements, I like that we have some flexibility when we would get to design considerations on there. I heard a lot of feedback in the community about the need for sand volleyball, and this was identified as the site. So again, before we would move to action on a facilities master plan, it would be great if we could see, visually see those called out, if they fit as, as we kind of lay out what would be there or at least have some idea if, if they fit, because if not, maybe they need to be considered somewhere else, I guess is my point. And does another board member have a question?
What's the timeline in the 10-year program on all these updates? Like, would we do the kitchen at Top of the World ahead of everything else? Or when you do it, would you do the whole site at one time? Because it seems like some of the things really are really need, and we have a 10-year plan. So I just wondered how we're thinking about how we're going to spread it out.
Great question, and it kind of brings me back to the earlier comments. Any discussion we can have or you can have as a board on the priorities you want to see with these projects and how they would align over the 10 years is going to go a real long way to help us map it out cash flow-wise with all of our available resources, see where it could fall, including doing some preliminary potential phasing of maybe single projects over the time. But we haven't, because we spent so much time getting up to this point, we haven't really talked about the phasing of it. And it is a long-term plan. So we want to hear the board's input with regard to that before we start laying it out on cash flow because we don't have any assumptions on what your priorities are up to this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question on the existing Top of the World kitchen. It's shown in the budget as being modernized as well, NPR kitchen modification. And at 223,000, I just wasn't sure why we would need that if we were doing a whole new food service building.
Yeah, it would actually occur in both elementaries if we got a new food service building. We would reconfigure the existing kitchens to be more like a storage or ancillary or flex or pull-out space. So it would no longer be a kitchen. It would rather serve some of the independent programs that we possibly have at our site or at that time. But it's really would just be flexible space, not a kitchen in any way.
I had heard or seen a play area expansion. I don't know if I missed that in the past planning, but was that a new need that was raised by the site to expand the playground?
Yeah, it's very clear with the number of students they have that that playground seems undersized. So in the improvement of it, and especially with the increased supervision that this layout would provide, it makes sense while you're working in that area to expand that playground anyway.
I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions from other board members? Okay, thank you. We move to Thurston, please.
Moving over to Thurston Middle School, the program needs identified include transformation of existing digital media lab into a flexible Makerspace classroom, black box theater enhancements to improve seating, storage, and stage use, and the ability to use the gym bleachers to watch and use the gymnasium courts. This is a site plan of Thurston Middle School. It is a fifteen acre site access from Park Avenue and also has a back pedestrian gate that is accessed off Skyline Drive. Taking a look at the enlarged site plan of the campus, the existing digital media lab attached to the library, which is directly behind this wall here, is shown to be removed to create a flexible Makerspace that still includes the tech lab. The space could provide indoor and outdoor learning environments for students to explore new technology. The black box theater is over twenty years old and in need of upgrades to the seating, storage, theater AV, and lighting. At the gym, the current bleachers extend out onto the gym floor so that when the bleachers are in use, the court is not able to be used. The addition shown in blue here extends the east wall of the gym to allow for sufficient bleacher space to be able to use the bleachers and the gym court at the same time. Included within the plan are improvements for outdoor learning opportunities throughout the campus. The total estimated construction cost for the improvements is identified to be approximately four point one million dollars. And with that, we will now pause for board questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to make sure our student, if you have questions, please jump in. I don't really need to ignore you.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear about this library space. So is what we're proposing that, like going up to where that white wall is, this whole, it's on the other side and we can't see it, it's already there. Okay, so I want to make sure. Thank you.
Could you give us the square footage proposed? Are we talking about a lot new, a lot new footprint? Like, we're going from five hundred square feet to twenty-five hundred square feet, or we're just renovating existing square footage?
So the only new square footage proposed on this plan would be the seven hundred and ninety square feet added on to the gymnasium so you could extend the bleachers and still play. Everything else is a modernization, so working within the existing space.
Is that enough space? When I've been in Mr. Crisp's lab, it seems like a small, is it a small space?
It is smaller than a traditional classroom for sure. And I think that was why the, one of the concepts was with that space, we call it Makerspace, what you think of the roll up doors, creating an indoor-outdoor learning environment. And that was a way to take what would be considered normally a smaller sized classroom and making it larger without adding an additional square footage, rather than just creating an outdoor combined learning space with it.
Okay, but for example, like RCTE labs at the high school have a much larger, like what would be the square footage on one of those rooms?
Off the top of my head, they're probably close to what a science classroom would have been. That's one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. They may be a little larger than that. But yeah, to your point, this would just improve this space to be better used for indoor/outdoor, and you could have a media lab moved to a different classroom that would be larger depending on the needs and the programs at that time.
Thank you.
Oh, you're gonna say, I kind of hesitate to ask this because it moves us into a different discussion in a way, but it does make me think about the integration of a media lab with like the library space. I don't know how we use this space, but it's a really big library with fewer books than you sometimes see in libraries. I wonder what we use this for during the day and whether it makes sense to do better integration of tech and library and this space. I mean, it's really nice for board meetings, but it's, you know, I don't know. I feel like we could fit like thirty more bookshelves in here and maybe technology also.
That's a great design conversation, I think, when we actually sit and start talking with the site and talking with Mr. Crisp and really kind of figuring out what is the square footage and how much do we want to dedicate to different program? And what structurally could we do? Because the structure also plays a role into how and what we could do, because originally the library went all the way back and they added this wall after the fact. So there's all sorts of pieces that we would have to start to uncover, but if that's, again, if there's an interest when we start talking with the site, what we're not doing, I think, is, and Member Osborne recognized that we're not adding square footage, we're trying to work within the footprint to not add new buildings. Which is good, we'll just push, we can push that way a little bit and then modernize that space, and we could come this way with it as well.
Well, I'm not suggesting we take up more of the library. I'm not making any sort of value judgment. What I am suggesting is that it, the larger design question being, how do we use both spaces in a sort of modern library kind of way that adds lots of books and maybe integrates with technology and has space for students to be working on all of these things. It seems like they should not be discrete projects.
Yeah, for sure.
I know we all heard the request for lighting on the field. Is that a possibility or?
We'd like to have the board discuss that, and if we can get, if there's interest, then certainly. It's something we could look into. I know I'd sent home information in the weekly showing some of the new technology with the LED lighting and how low profile and there's almost no light glare. But that is up to this point not been something that we've heard or discussed. So if there is interest, that is certainly something we would look into.
Are there any other questions before we go to the next section?
Mr. Dixon, this section does not have a field improvements line item, correct? Because the field was just built. Yes, gotcha. Okay, so note to self and in our discussions, great, thank you, Dee, for that.
The next section in the high school, please.
The Laguna Beach High School program was originally discussed at the March twenty-third study session, at which time direction was received to complete community engagement meetings, reduce the scope of work at the school site to not include a district office component. The program was brought back at the May twenty-third study session with a reduction in the scope of work based on the feedback received. The plans from the May twenty-third study session were again brought back on June twenty-seventh, and lastly, here again today for the consideration. The program needs include a centralized student support and school administration services to meet this current and future needs. Provide modern buildings that comply with current building codes and accessibility standards. The theater has aging infrastructure that is no longer used within the industry and limits programming within the space. The art and design classrooms are in need of enhancements to expand learning opportunities to meet the current and future needs. Let's take a look at the high school site plan. The existing administration office and twenties classroom building is shown to be removed and replaced with a new two-story building shown in turquoise, the top left of the screen. Existing twenties classrooms are approximately ninety-five years old and were constructed around nineteen twenty-eight. They originally served as Laguna Beach Grammar School before opening as Laguna Beach High School in nineteen thirty-four, when a new grammar school was constructed across the street at the present day pool property. That was from the research that was able, I was able to do. The existing classrooms are supported on raised wood foundations and also have a wood framed roof with attic space above. The replacement classrooms would be built to current standards and building codes to provide much improved learning environments with sustainable materials. The proposed building is at the approximate location of the existing buildings and does not appear to significantly impact existing sightlines. The adjacent artist theater shown here in orange is in need of significant infrastructure replacements to bring the theater up to current standards for theatrical systems and controls. In doing so, a large energy savings can be achieved by replacing the existing one hundred and eighty conventional tungsten fixtures with modern LED type fixtures. Existing analog systems are outdated and modern digital systems are needed to meet current program performance needs. The art classrooms housed in the forties building have evolved over the recent years. Currently, there is a comprehensive Makerspace classroom that is operating, operating out of this building, although the building does not have the infrastructure to support all the learning opportunities and equipments available to the program. The plan covers upgrades to the needed infrastructure and building space to provide modernized classrooms with indoor and outdoor learning environments. It is important to note that this area is adjacent to the stadium and circulation to and from the bleachers will need to be kept when designing the outdoor learning environments improvements in this area. This is an elevation view of the proposed two-story administration counseling center building shown in relationship to the existing streetscape. The proposed building size remains within the existing building locations and sightlines. The estimated construction costs remain at approximately twenty-three million dollars for the high school site. And with that, we will now pause for board questions. Thank you.
Questions, please?
So the building that is in place of the proposed admin building, would this be the same amount of classrooms in this plan as there are now?
Yes, right now there's six classrooms there, and the proposed two-story building does have six classrooms being replaced within.
And then also another quick question. The courtyard enhancements, that's the current senior quad, yes?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so with our enrollment, one thing that I've noticed as a student, not many people tend to use the senior quad. So what's the demand for the renovations of that space? What does that look like?
I think it's an opportunity to have an outdoor space that can meet student needs and community needs. And so looking at an underutilized space is going to give us an opportunity to modernize and possibly create a demand. So if you build it, they will come. So I think a lot of opportunity there to create an outdoor space that's inviting and student, you know, focused, so.
Thank you.
Welcome.
On that same area, is that going to open that up? Where it's now, those classrooms come down, I mean, there is that archway entry and then the senior courtyard, senior quad. But that will, that will go away. Those classrooms toward park will be gone and replaced with this. So that'll be a completely open space that will.
That's the idea, yeah, because I think one of the reasons that senior quad is so underutilized is because it's isolated itself on the center of the campus, and there's not a big natural way to gather lots of people or have activities where this is coming out of our discussions over the years and how important outdoor learning spaces can be. And if designed right and incorporated into the surrounding structures and buildings, you can create real, real neat environments that our students and our staff can enjoy, and it has this ability to create almost like a more defined single entrance point for the school as well.
Thank you. So how many square feet are being added to the administration and classroom?
The, what is shown here is ninety-four hundred square feet on the first floor and ninety-four hundred square feet on the second floor.
And what is it currently?
We'd have to double check. I think it's around three thousand square feet, thirty-two hundred square feet for the current administration office. We'd have to pull those square footage. I know they were analyzed with the program, and I believe a few extra square footage is being added to meet the current programming needs for the administration portion.
Right, I just wonder.
We were short the counseling center.
Square feet were being added from what we have now.
Sure, you guys can get that and then.
We'll have to get that information and provide that.
There's a number of classrooms that are being taken out, so you'd need to incorporate that, correct? Into, into figuring that out?
Yes, exactly. So we will, we will have to pull the existing square footage of the twenties and the administration office, and then then you could be compared to the proposed square footage of the new building. And the delta primarily is for the administration, the student counseling, student service portion of the the project. That's where the square footage is needed to create that counseling center and the student services. Off the top of my head, I think it was somewhere three, four thousand square feet was, was, was needed, but we'll have to get that information and share that back. You're welcome.
And then, Mr. Zada, on the existing six classrooms, you mentioned that are from nineteen twenty-eight era or nineteen twenties era. One of the things I've noticed from going to different events is the how compacted and congested the hallways are. So is building code changed? It's really hard to pass in those hallways. So I don't know if that's a holdover from before when you used to be able to have more narrow hallways, because it feels really, really tight. Does anybody?
I don't know. You want to take this one? All right, thank you.
I noticed at it back to school night, especially where you're like almost in a.
We know building code changes every three years.
Oh, it does, okay.
So we would imagine there'd be some significant changes, but.
Sorry. In terms of the width itself, typically it'll just be based on the loading from the different classrooms or the different spaces adjacent to it. So I'm not sure during one of those school nights that it's more than just the used space like on a regular basis. Does that make sense in terms of when you have larger events that it wasn't necessarily made for? Is that, is that kind of addressed?
I guess my question is, in a proposed new build of six classrooms, would we end up with wider hallways?
Oh, okay, yes.
Yes, okay.
It would be based on, yeah, based on current code requirements.
Okay, and I would imagine current code is much wider than our as-built. Okay, that was great. And then could you just remind us on the first floor, second floor, is the counseling center first floor or the classrooms first floor? It's been a while since we've looked at this.
We had the administration and the counseling center on the first floor, and then we have the six classrooms above on the second floor. But that's, that's programming, and it's programming for master plan. So it's really just you're identifying the square footage. So at the time of design, that, that all is variable and can be, you know, designed to meet the, the current needs.
Yeah, that makes.
It's flexible within design.
Yeah, I think from what we've heard about the counseling center and then to Chase's point on picking up some usage of the outdoor learning space, you really need a counseling center that's welcoming and inviting and needs to connect. So my hope would be that we don't just end up with classrooms down on the bottom floor, that we have a new area that feels completely different, that people come to receive counseling services and connects to that area. And I think that would address maybe Chase's, I won't call it a concern, but his point on the underutilization of that space. So even though we could program it later, if it's the vision of the board that that's what we want, then we need to make sure that we're clear about that.
And your question, you have a question on that?
Or you just? My question was, where were the classrooms first floor, second floor? They were answered.
We have to save our discussion for later.
And just for reference, on May twenty-third, there was some programming diagrams and back in that presentation that did show the six classrooms on the second floor and did show the administration and counseling center on the first floor, so.
It also showed the counseling area opening up into maybe the quad area as well. So kind of to your point about connections and making sure that those spaces get activated.
Great, thank you, guys. That was.
And one of the nice advantages of that location, and I think for those who've actually been on the campus, you recognize we stepped down quite a bit as you, the campus flows down, right? So we have, there are many two-story buildings on that campus that often, from the outside perspective, look like a single story because the, the way that everything kind of tears down. So there's a lot of opportunity there to continue that same kind of architectural design when we get into the design features. So you know, where it may look like the classrooms are on the second floor, they might actually, you could have them potentially at a first floor entry and have the counseling office underneath it, similar to what we have with the current ASB and library, just the way that flows down this floor. So those are all design features that we would obviously work with our architects on to, again, try to maintain the, the scope and size there so that it kind of exists in a, in a footprint that is obviously reasonable and, and pulled back. So we want to flow really well with that counseling center. As we talk to the counselors, having that indoor/outdoor space where it's very inviting and, and open is obviously something of importance for them. So we want to make sure that it becomes in some designs, we've seen academic quads where kids can go and so quieter, and then you have kind of the more activities quad, which would, you know, as it currently has, we have just the one quad where you know, everything goes on in that one space. You could have some opportunity to kind of have, you know, different spaces that have some different functions. And our students, if you were to go onto campus, you'll see, you know, we have a lot of flexibility with our schedule. Students are able to, you know, pop out, go to the library for a portion of their, you know, if they don't have a class a certain period, having those spaces on campus that students can, can push out to, especially in terms of this kind of learning environment would be important. And the students actually last year tried to redesign the senior quad a little bit to make it a little more welcoming. They did some, like a little project and tried to, you know, do some planting ideas. They did some new artwork in that space. I, I don't believe the uptake has, has increased necessarily. It does look pretty. They did a nice job. But I think it is, it does look better, but I think just the way it's locked in there is problematic or a challenge for, for kids to access it. But we all know that that, that whole elevation tiers and changes a lot and slopes two different directions as it comes down park and comes towards the high school field. There's definitely a slope there. So we'll take advantage of all those pieces when we get to design. and comes towards the high school field. There's definitely a slope there. So we'll take advantage of all those pieces when we get to design.
Was that senior quad designed to be separate kind of for a reason?
It used to be full of lockers. But they were a noise problem for the classes going on in the rooms that backed up to them when the kids were accessing their lockers.
And then another que, oh, sorry. Um, another question, accessibility wise, I know building D is a two-story building. But, um, there's an elevator through, I believe, building K and then there's a walkway. So students with accessibility needs would be able to reach those second-story classrooms. Would there, is there a proposed way like an elevator or some other way for those accessibility needs to be met for those second-story classrooms?
Yeah, we'd have to meet with or fall in line with American with Disabilities Act, so it would likely be an elevator.
Jim, more questions?
Yeah, I write that the six classrooms are going to be on the second floor. In the building, yeah. And I just wondered, I wonder how insulated it is. I remember I was trying to remember that. The classrooms are on the second floor. I was wondering how insulated the floor is going to be. I remember the poet Nash, who had a wonderful poem about the people who lived upstairs walked on stilts. And so I was just wondering as far as since you're putting the classrooms up, up above, as far as the students aren't always quiet as far as what we will hear down below.
We'll make sure that that doesn't occur. Yeah, that's one of the benefits of bringing up to new buildings and new building code with modernizations is that you can take advantage of those insulation opportunities. So you're not hearing your neighbors on stilts upstairs.
Any other questions?
I wanted, I, I don't need this information tonight, but I was curious on building F, the historic gym. I don't know what it goes by, but I know that building F is the more aged gym. What the date was of the floor replacement or when those floors were last replaced in building F, the, I would call it the alternate gym. And then if you guys could repeat on the theater, you mentioned something about tungsten. And what was the, the modern replacement of that for my notes?
It's a, it's a tungsten lamp that's in the theater and working with Dez, who's, um, he's off today, but he has been in, he's been working with the different vendors that the theater regularly uses. They've determined that the existing 180 lights, these are theatrical lights. These are the ones that they use for lighting up the stage and for their, their performances, not the house lights. The house lights are the ones that just turn on and off for, you know, ingress egress. So these, these 180 lights, they're, they're about 30 years old. They're, they're very outdated. They use a lot of energy. And they can be replaced with LED lights, which is the current type of lights. And then those are on and off immediately and they're, they're all controlled through a very, you know, complex digital control systems. And they're coordinated, you know, with the modern day performances and use of these types of theatrical facilities. So, um, more information if you needed on that, we have lots.
Yeah, and thank you very much.
Anyone have any more questions? I just had one question, which may be ahead of its time. But in the one hallway, there are some of the Megan Jones artworks. And so will that be consideration of moving those again?
Could you repeat the artist's name, President Vickers?
The Megan Jones artworks that were originally in the old cafeteria and then we relocated them to various hallways around the campus. But there are some that are in that one hallway that's going to be.
We look for opportunities to relocate those, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the question. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to the district office, please.
The district office project was previously identified within district's 10-year facility master plan and is still identified as a facility project within this current plan. The program needs included, include accessibility access, code compliant restrooms, functional meeting spaces and considerations to fit into the surrounding community neighborhood. The plan identifies a new single-story 12,000-square-foot facility that is located at the existing building locations and maintains current sightlines. The proposed building has been programmed and discussed at multiple prior study sessions to demonstrate feasibility. The proposed project can meet current and future community district office administration needs. If you recall, the initial proposed update from March 23rd included a larger district office that was co-located across the street with the high school to try and take advantage of shared spaces. That proposal was for a 20,000-square-foot building that included additional parking, which has been removed completely from the plan. And this is what we have today. The estimated construction costs for the single-story 12,000-square-foot facility are approximately $10.5 million and do reflect a reduced scope of work that meets the basic essential needs of the operations housed at this facility. With that, we will now pause again for questions. Thank you.
Questions from all members, including our students?
Uh, Mr. Zeta, on the site improvements for parking, is that 1.7 million of new striping or paint or are there other improvements that we need to make with grading or something else I'm missing?
So that, that dollar amount would cover the entire parking lot to be re-graded and repaved, including curb and gutter and a retaining wall along Park Avenue. So that it's a new and functioning parking lot that's coordinated with the new facility for access, handicap parking, all those sorts of things that we're going to have to, have to provide for in the event we build a new, new, new building there.
So how many staff will be housed in this 12,000-square-feet?
The idea would be based on all the existing staff that we currently have kind of scattered, some at school sites. Of course, we have some in the annex in the 90s and then we have all of our staff in the business building, instruction building, and then the A building that we call it.
So what's that add up to?
Off the top of my head, I know in our area, it's probably around 33, 35, but you throw in the, the staff at the other sites, maybe Ryan and I were to say maybe even 45-ish.
Okay, so we, we wouldn't be using the 90s building anymore?
Oh, absolutely would.
We would, that, okay.
Yes.
We though, can you clarify the new tenant agreement with school power? Because I think after the family resource center was opened or is opening shortly, eminently, our new agreement lease with them gives them space up there because they're back of the house staff, I believe, is up there. Anyhow, could you clarify that for us?
Yep, absolutely. So the first, now it is an official address. It's 811 Manzanita. The first portable that you see, the first building that you see now, that is housed by school power staff. So who were used to be where the family resources center is now, is now up in that portable. After that portable is our district training room. So it's not offices. We don't have staff there, but we have lots of trainings and that room is very heavily utilized. So that will continue to be used. It's a valuable resource. I know Chad and his team are there often. And then at the very end of that, we have three offices where Mr. Zeta and our nutrition supervisor and Kelly Shear are currently sitting. So really, there's only three, three offices up there.
And which people are coming back from the different schools to be at the, the district office?
Which staff?
Yeah.
I think any of them that have a central office function that are working out of the sites just out of necessity right now. I know we have technology people strewn throughout. I know we have some instructional services. But it would be just based on anyone that we would rather work more efficiently together as a group than have to call in or drive into the office for a team meeting.
Okay.
Any other questions? So you have a presentation on the, on the cost summary? Or is that the? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, President Vickers, I had one more question. What, what's the age of the building on the oldest part of the district office?
It's difficult. The, I know the business building is an old converted house. I do not know the original age. Judging by the fireplace, probably beyond, you know, 1930-ish. And then the rest of the building outside of the IT portion, you know, the taller portion on that E building is relatively the, I would say the newest portion of that building. It was an add-on and that was done in the early to mid 2000s, maybe 2005 or 6ish timeline. Maybe a little sooner. Yeah.
So are we looking at scraping everything and starting over or parts going to be saved?
So a good question, but again, as a, so for a facilities master plan purpose, we're assuming all new construction is for our square footage and cost estimate. But as we get into design, let's say that IT portion is still really good and can be connected into without significant code upgrades. Those are considerations we will go through and help with value engineering the project when we get into that.
Do we know how much asbestos and fungus is in that building?
We actually are required by law to do an inspection every three years. It's our AHRAs. It's actually posted on our facility page. It identifies any asbestos in our district. And within the buildings, the district office, the, I believe, the only known is the, uh, the floor tile that's in the small closet in Jeff's office where the safe is at. And it's encapsulated, so it's not a risk, but it is something on the list. And we've been slowly, there's not much left and it would, we'll probably prioritize it to be removed soon. But it has a safe over, it weighs about 3,000 pounds. So that's probably why it hasn't been done yet. But to our knowledge, that's, that's what we're aware of for asbestos within that property.
And do we not notice all the employees in the building every year, every three years when this happens about what they're living in? I mean, in, in state university system, I lived in the psychology building and every three years I got this thing about how much asbestos was, was in the building and to be where. And most of the women who are on my floor have died. I survived it, but it seems like I'd be very cautious about.
That's why we have to post it every three years, yeah.
Any other questions? This cost summary?
Yeah, so as we reached the end, I just want to provide a quick summary of what you've seen tonight as far as cost goes. The total construction that you see in the projects presented tonight was about $60 million. If you add in the pool that was presented to the last meeting at about 16 million, it brings a project total to $76 million. Again, this is just today's dollars, construction costs rough order of magnitude numbers, but it's good for planning purposes. The original version, just because I give some context, when we say reduce scope, it's, it's easy to say, but if you want a metric to, to measure it by, the original proposal had about $120 million of construction and today we're down to that 76, so it's $44 million less. So that's a quantifiable measure of what we say when a reduction in scope. And also to align with our facilities plan later, and I'm, I hope we'll have this discussion on the prioritization after this. But there are a magnitude of additional revenue sources that have not been considered, that will have to be considered when we map this out cash flow wise. And just so the board knows, and we'll have a, a better idea as we lay it out, but state matching funds, for example, for facilities. A lot of these improvements were classroom instruction-based new construction or modernization. The state's program provides 60% reimbursement for modernization, 50% for new construction. None of that's been factored into our cash flow models because we haven't created them yet, but there is that opportunity. As I mentioned in the beginning, the Inflation Reduction Act has a significant chunk of money available for our district that we're going to take advantage of. And we couldn't be better aligned thanks to the sustainability work that we've pursued and got a jump start on. So we're in a good, solid position to take advantage of those dollars. As well as there's the career technical education dollars that can be used for facilities. And we still have the, for example, arts, music discretionary block grant. That discretionary piece, you can use whatever chunk for capital improvement or modernization. So all of these sources, we'll be looking at and get a better picture for the board on how we can map it out over our 10 years. And then in the event that there are projects outside of the scope that we could not self-fund, we'll, we'll identify that as a potential financing. And we'll be able to have those discussions at that time on what that could look like. And as a reminder, the current, like, let's say, general obligation bond is being paid down through 2028. So there's plenty of planning time to get ready to survey and campaign if the board were ever interested in pursuing a general obligation bond in the future. You have between now and 2028 to make that a decision for us to get, get work on it. But until we identify the projects that are, uh, would need the financing, it's really not relevant to have that discussion at this point.
Thank you. Any, any last questions from board members before we go to public comment?
Sure. So, so the 60 million is, is a lot less. What do you think the soft cost will be? I mean, do you double that? Would it actually cost us more like 120 million?
I can't predict what the bid climate will be at the time. There's, um, as you go out in the future, the assumption is that costs are going to escalate. There have been times where the bid climate has been very favorable for school districts and we get a lot lower than we had estimated in the past. A industry standard on soft costs, you could say is 30, 35%. But again, because this is today's dollars and this is a long-term plan, I would be hesitant to put any sort of percentage on something that may be starting construction in eight years. I, I just know I'll be wrong. We know we'll be 100% wrong, but hopefully close.
We just need to know that it will be a lot more than this. We don't know how much more.
Yeah.
I, I'm curious about, I, I'm just trying to get a sort of sense of how this plays out. So my understanding is that we have these kind of estimated costs. We need to stage what's going to happen when, over a 10-year period. And then the costs also change in accordance with how we ultimately design projects. So for example, we have money in here for Thurston, but maybe we would, you know, come up with different or, you know, more or less expensive designs. So does it turn out that we talk about staging it and then we set up a committee for each one of these projects? Or how, how does it sort of play out is what I'm curious about?
Yeah, really good question. So because it is a long-term plan, it's updated annually. So we make adjustments every year to the plan based on the changing information that we're faced with. When we lay out the potential timeline, that's going to be based on our existing resources and what we have available. And so any unforeseen, we're very conservative with our, let's say, our grant. We never projected, let's say, any matching funds for Thurston project. We ended up getting $600,000 from the state of California. So that's a little buffer we always like to work with in our budgeting. But this is really just to set the vision for what projects we can do. We'll give you a glimpse of what that's going to look like over 10 years with our existing resources. But then again, we have to bring it back every year to update because of that very reason. This is, we would love to plan something 10 years out and go exactly as planned, but that's very rare.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dixon, the information that you presented regarding the high school administration, modernization, and also the district office renovation. To that point, what last facilities master plan were they included in? Because I thought these were actually extensions of undone projects that were in our last 10-year plan. Could you?
Correct, good. The two big unfinished projects from our first iteration of the master plan done in 2015 was the district offices and the Laguna Beach High School admin counseling center.
Thank you for asking that question. I was going to want to share with that with Joan that they've been waiting, basically. They were at the, the bottom of priorities before. And as we discuss that later, we'll find out what things may affect where the priorities fall this time.
I just wanted to add one more piece about the costs. Looking at Pat, at our recent project over the last five years, we, we have done a, a, a good job of staying on target and being on budget with those project costs as far as the projected estimates that we've shown in our master plan updates each year. And when we've actually gone out to bid and award those contracts and then manage those contracts and complete the jobs and bring them in on budget. So we do have a pretty consistent track record there. And we have seen some small savings here and there on those projects and been able to use those for other projects around the school site, like Thurston, for example, with the field. We're able to do some of the grass replacements within the campus here over by the amphitheater in the back. And some of the grass by the oak tree when you come in by the bench. So some small, small savings are always good to, to be able to reutilize and expand. And, yeah, so thank you.
Any last questions before we move to public comment? Thank you. Yeah, do we have cards to receive for public comment?
I do, President. I do, President Vickers. Are we ready to begin?
Yes.
Steve Brown, come forward to the podium and you'll be followed by Steve McIntosh. And are there any other cards from the audience?
Good evening. I'm Steve Brown with Sensible Laguna. I'm here representing the voices of of over two thousand residents who have signed up with us through the website and have been closely following the facilities plan process and board decision-making around it. While there seem to be some sensible projects for the students in this part of the plan, other components should have a much closer needs and impact analysis performed by outside experts before the school board commits to such significant spending. At a baseline level, one must ask why we need to spend over twenty-five million on administration and district buildings for the smallest public school district in Orange County and one that continues to rapidly shrink further every year. As has been said before by a board member, your facilities plan embeds the pool as the linchpin to this whole thing. Because only by having the biggest pool available on the market in the plan can you get a slightly bigger cost than what you want to spend on individual admin and district buildings for the smallest public school district in Orange County. Perhaps the idea is that the public won't see this as you move to pay for the pool. Spending on the administration and district buildings is significant, as you can see in the deck. And as with the pool project here again, no outside experts have been hired to do a thorough feasibility study to analyze enrollment trends, staffing to student ratios and a host of other factors that should certainly be important to this board. Once again, you are here as a group without critical data to support your analysis and there appears zero appetite or interest in trying to be sure the taxpayer money you seek to spend is on a solid foundation. Overall spending in the plan with soft costs is a hundred million dollars and the vast majority is going to district staff, administrators or a small subset of the student body, it appears. In closing, I will also say that in our con- conversations with the city council and as stated publicly in their most recent meeting, no one on the school board speaks for them. Not on pool size, not on whether or not they will participate in the pool or anything else, they made that crystal clear. They then closed by stating strongly that they absolutely have not made any decisions at this point and are now beginning their own process of evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh Steve McIntosh, come forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'd rather be home watching the football game, but here I am. Uh take you back to June twenty-seventh session. Uh the water polo coach stood right here and stated the following when asked about programs. If the city does anything, which I'm not trying to be like all fifty-meter, but if the city does have their own pool and we don't have to share, then that changes a lot. President Vickers asked, so based on what you said, can you elaborate on how you would change what you do if the city had a pool? He said, if the city had a pool, I would be able to run practices longer, which means I wouldn't have to fit all of my players in the practice at the same time, i.e. the three concurrent practice uh sham. So he goes on to say, so the issue we have right now is like, we have to get out at six o'clock because that's from the club start. It is what it is, but if we could extend practices, then hopefully I would be able to have varsity go from four to seven and JV go from one thirty to four. That way they wouldn't have to all be in the pool at the same time. Again, coming back to this, that's one hundred and eighty degrees difference than what your water polo coach says. So that's a little ludicrous. So uncheck that box. So on the June sixth joint city council board uh meeting video, uh Councilman Ranagi asked President Vickers, explain what you're saying about the city needs to build a pool. How does that relate to your plan? Uh Vickers says, well, we're looking at putting a pool where um where it is now, but enlarging it. But it doesn't have to have the same, it doesn't have the same attributes that the pool currently has as far as the use for therapeutic and the little children use. And also just the fact that the city rec use that has grown so much, those are the kids that are waiting at night. So if there was a pool in another location that could be used at another time of day, I mean, that's where that the big growth has been, assuming we have the same essence of the same high school athletic programs. But we just can't do it all if we continue with one pool, which that is. She continues, well, I'm sorry, we will continue to not be able to meet the needs without the kids, you know, going home at nine o'clock at night. I mean, it will be the same. It won't improve it and there's just growth in those programs and I don't see any other way than a second pool is needed, close quote. So what you see here is exactly from your last uh presentation, eight to nine o'clock, notice, still kids in the pool. The whole purpose of this whole fifty-meter pool that you guys concocted was to get people out of the pool at nine o'clock. That was one of the big requirements. Uncheck that box too. So you might put a spin on that, but it is what it is. So uh details do matter and real data matters. And uh some of you here ran on the data-driven platform, we know who you are. And it's apparent that data only seems to matter when it can be manipulated or skewed. So speaking about the costs from ADG.
That's three minutes. Thank you, Steve. That was three minutes. Are speakers for public comment tonight? No further speakers, President Vickers.
And now it's uh time for us to have our discussion. And as Mr. Dixon has asked, part of that discussion is to discuss our input on priorities and to help them see what we see as the direction uh for certain projects then that would carry the most weight to be done with the most urgency. Mr. Dixon, would you remind us, please, um the mandates involving TK? Because that's, I know that's one of our, it will become one of our priorities because of what the state is requiring us to be ready for. Is that the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
Correct. So yeah, that is kind of a state-imposed priority for this. There there is some phasing opportunities we could look at with that, but beyond that, it would just be really helpful to have the discussion on what projects you want to prioritize as a board so that we can begin laying them out and seeing seeing how we phase them over the ten-year plan.
Do you mean that holistically or project by project, meaning school by school, I meant to say?
Either way would work. Um I I think project by project would be a lot easier. And then we could look at phasing options internally on our side to see how that could work out. But if you just want to pick project by project, um that would you could go, because it's it's almost like one big project at each school. But it would really help if you had like a specific project, let's say you wanted to prioritize doing uh the district office as your main project. And then um we know TK and and preschool, that's going to come just because of the programs that had come, so now we kind of know that. So what it becomes like the third, fourth and fifth project that the board would like to see and how we could fit that within our plan.
Shall we go, starting with El Moro, work our way?
Yeah, I think if we could as a board to kind of discuss each of the projects first, so if there's some direction site by site and then prioritize as a second order of business that might, you know, because we haven't had a chance to discuss some of the things that we've heard yet. Would that be okay, President? Sure. Dr. Kelly, you wanted to start with El Moro, because that's the first one up, yeah. So my thoughts on our El Moro are, it's one of the larger amounts um total in the spending across all all the campuses. I am concerned about the six point seven million for PK. I'm a little conflicted because it is the one of the oldest buildings that needs modernization. But I don't know as a board that we've seen enough data to support um setting that forth in a FMP as PK. Um I thought Dr. Matcheski asked a lot of good questions about the need, the EDI data, um what our students are coming in, what skills gap, what the what the what the real need is. And I don't know that we've studied that um in depth yet for a you know, for programming that for PK. But I don't disagree that that building is, needs to be renovated, right? It's it's old. So and I like that we put it down to from two stories to one. But I still am not really comfortable with PK there. Um I didn't have any other um concerns. I thought the rest of the plan was great. So that was my comments on El Moro.
My overall comments has to do with, I believe, things that support the programming of the district are the most important priorities for us to do early. Um and at El Moro, um when I look at what I would say to would be to um maximize the opportunities for site improvements. The and and anything that, anything that is required by the state for code and stuff like that, that would be another one of my priorities.
Joan, do you have a comment on El Moro?
It was it was more of a follow-up comment um to wanting to see more information about this sort of broader vision about um PK, which I actually really support, particularly if it's full day and we're um accommodating special needs students. But I think seeing sort of the bigger report around or whatever information we've collected and community talk would be helpful um as as we proceed with planning. I think in terms of the vision, I mean, I think having a broadly integrated program that brings kids in at young at a young age and provides a full-day kindergarten or pre-K program for kids who don't have other places to go and helps them to integrate into TK and kindergarten. You know, I think that's a worthwhile thing for the district to do. Um but as I was implying before, it's unclear to me, you know, the number of students we would need to accommodate the need and, yeah.
And that's, it is going to be a challenge and that's something that we'll need the board to kind of weigh in on is specifically how big do you want us to make the program? Do you want us to make it so that we can serve theoretically every student uh that's a kinder student? So you're talking, you know, potentially a hundred and forty students. Um or does the board want us to design a program that fits um a smaller number of students? Um obviously, there, these are fee-based programs, the preschool programs. That will determine the size of the program that we can actually put, that we'd have to build, right? So um uh what would be our current size with three classrooms, full-day program? What, based off what's projected, how many students could we support?
Well, keep in mind, one of them is our special day class. So it would be two classrooms we would build out approximately fifteen to eighteen students. So maybe three or four of them would be our special education students. And then you're looking at twelve to fifteen um fee-based students. So licensing would have to come out and, you know, measure the space because there's a certain amount of square footed that is needed per student. I believe it's thirty-five square feet indoors and seventy-five outdoors.
Do you know how many of the PK programs in the community offer full daycare?
Uh currently, we have two.
Out of how many?
Five, trying to think. Four, essentially, if you're counting, like Annalise has a couple of different campuses.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think Dr. Mayberry, on that, you mentioned the integration of the special day class with their peers. And I was under the impression when we added TK, having such a larger group of four-year-olds to integrate with, that we would be in more compliance and that would have gotten much easier where previously we had very few four-year-olds and now we have and are growing our our four-year-old to a full-size class. So it seems like some of that integration, like say we have six students in our special ed preschool, some of them are three-year-olds, some of them are four-year-olds. Obviously, we want them to um integrate with students of their age, but haven't we, aren't we already meeting that with TK to some degree or doing better than we were before?
We do have several uh special ed uh TK students that are integrated into our TK class. Keep in mind, we currently only have one TK class at each site. So we do have uh other preschool students who maybe are included for recess time or lunchtime only. But skill set level is a little bit different inside the TK classroom than maybe what um our preschool special ed students need.
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't want us to build out a preschool program on the crux of, we have to integrate those six um SDC students into a preschool setting when we already have a four-year-old setting now because we've added a whole nother grade of which we're receiving no funding for. So I really want to, I support early education. By all means, I just really want to be careful about encumbering this district to, even a fee-based program, if anybody's been in early childhood education, they don't operate, but they operate with razor-thin margins. It's very hard to recoup what it costs to run a high-quality program. So I'm a little torn on how we do this well, I guess, at this point, at this juncture.
And as TK expands, that provides some opportunities for four-year-olds, but not for three-year-olds and some of the four-year-olds that are don't behaviorally fit into a TK classroom that have an IEP. And we're referencing, you know, Ed code things, like we are out of compliance with special education at the at our preschool right now, like it's, we have tried to like bust them to Boys and Girls Club or other options where we take them to these other preschools off-campus. Obviously, there's a lot of challenges taking three and four-year-old students with IEPs to another location during the day. Um so it's really been something that um, you know, Mrs. White and now Mrs. Johnson are trying to figure out how to navigate. Um sometimes it's taken to a faith-based preschool. So if we have, let's just say, five three-year-olds, um the typical, per se, there's lots of different percentages, but like when you think of like integrating it, you typically would never do more than a third of a class. Uh it's typically, we try to stay lower, closer to like fifteen to twenty percent when you're integrating. So if you had five, that would mean you would want to have a preschool of at least twenty to twenty-four uh not students with non-IEPs, um which would lend itself to, you know, more, you know, at least two fee-based classrooms. Like that's kind of the lens that we looked at it is like, what's the minimum in order to put us in compliance on the inclusive part of students with IEPs? Obviously, there's other options because there's clearly a need in the community to have more full-day programs to expand that beyond that, but we were just looking, the the plan just has what's what's the base thing to put us in compliance for students with IEPs? So they have an inclusive learning environment.
Yeah, I I hear you. It's, it's just at this point, like if we were, if we said that building primarily need to be remodeled at six point seven million dollars for PK, even if we could develop another partnership with another district that had, you know, I think here we're we're dealing with such a small number of students and that's working against us, right? Other larger districts have large preschool programs because they have a lot of students in that three to five, in that early identified age that can consolidate at one location. So maybe we need to explore other district partnerships that aren't faith-based to integrate. Right? If we're only left with three or four three-year-olds, this is a big investment to make for a small number. I know we're in a we're trying to do the right thing.
I'd be very hesitant to to send, we already have a hard enough time sending some of our students into the SALPA and to saddle back for um preschool or beyond preschool or TK students that we might not be able to serve who are more severe because of the bus ride. And right now, I can tell you, the bus ride within our SALPA is uh the program that we're looking at is all the way out um in Rancho Santa Margarita. So the students that are in that program are going to be on a bus for up to potentially forty-five minutes to an hour. Um we're really hesitant um that, you know, I I recognize the concern that you're bringing forth. Um the recommendation from staff is why you see three spaces is because at a minimum, we believe that that's the program that we should uh begin to design. Um and that, you know, that's why we're showing the three there. We could obviously build more if that was the intent of the board. Um but we believe that at a minimum, this this is what we need to do to be in compliance. Um we have found ways to navigate it over the years and I applaud Irene and and the team over the years to be able to accomplish this. But I think moving forward, knowing what we know, um and knowing that there's actually access to dollars for some of these programs, you know, our recommendations to act now. You know, we, we believe that we can design the program to meet the needs of our students and and not not take away from what exists in the community, but really add additional supports to our families, especially those that have uh children that are already in our school. So if the students at El Moro, for example, and is an upper grade, the parent would be able to have one pickup, one drop-off location. We do think it's challenging, obviously, at top of the world, if we were to try to put a preschool program in there, but if the board said, no, we want you to build two at, you know, one at both sites. You know, obviously, we could come back and bring that back as a potential plan, but for the time being, we believe we can um at least started at El Moro with the buildings the way they are and the needs related to those current building facilities, so.
How young would you anticipate going in preschool children?
Um well, for licensing uh purposes, when you're looking at preschool age, you're looking at uh twenty-four to thirty-six, no, sorry, forty-eight months.
I know, uh you often they say there's the two-year-old class, three-year-old class and the four-year-old class. And assuming that after the twenty-five, well, twenty-five, our four-year-olds would be in TK.
Correct.
So we would need basically a a two-year-old class and a three-year-old class because they would not be together.
Yes, that's if we would want to go as young as two-year-old classes. Um the big need would be for the three-year-old class for sure.
And we're thinking of doing two-year-olds?
No, unless the board gave us that direction.
And I I I think I missed something, Dr. Valori.
And I, I think I missed something, Dr. Valori said, we're, we're planning on bringing in something from Santa Margarita?
No, our, our, as part of, again, you know, we're part of the SALPA, which is our, our SALPA saddleback. So students that are needing certain program requirements within our SALPA because we don't have severe program supports, right now those students, we bust them. And my hesitancy in, in saying, working with another district are the other district we work with is, and this is our SALPA and that's saddleback. The current program space that's available within the SALPA is, is all the way out in Rancho Santa Margarita. So our students who we have to send out there who only have severe needs are sitting on a bus for an extended period of time. You know, at that young age, we obviously recognize the challenges that are facing that. And parents don't really love that fact. That being said, we're simply trying to talk about the ones that we, we believe, what we currently service. Adding more into that to say, we're going to send more into the SALPA. One, I don't know if the SALPA has space to be able to really accommodate more students if we were to try to push more out. But two, I, I just recognize the challenges that, that faces when you put kids that little on a bus for that period of time.
I tend to agree with Clerk Kelly that having the TK that they can integrate to, I, I don't know that we mean both. I, I taught SDC preschool class. And I did not even have a TK. I had a kindergarten class and I had three-year-olds that I, you know, that's where, that's where we integrated and we made it work. And I'm, obviously, that's not ideal, but I think at this cost that we're really lucky to have four-year-olds to integrate with.
I think though, that TK is, is a separate thing. I mean, I feel like you're talking about it as if it's the same possible program that we could have three-year-olds and.
No, no, not at all. We're just talking about having our SDC kids have a place to integrate into for a small part of the day.
That's one of the things that staff brought up that we're out of compliance with, that they're trying to be, do a better, better job at, not to summarize, but.
Right. So we have an obligation, we have an obligation to, for least restricted environment to have students, for a three-year-old to be in with their peers, which would be three-year-olds. And so right now, what we're doing, as mentioned by staff, is working with our local providers to be able to do some things. But there are challenges that exist with that and that, that needs to eventually stop, in my opinion. And I'm, I'm going on the record saying that we need to move forward in some way, shape or form around this topic. I think working the current way that we've been doing it is an outdated method that, you know, Director White has been asking me to address for a very long period of time. But we didn't have a facility in which or program to be able to do that. And that's why we're making the recommendation we are at this point is that we don't believe even using TK students and having our preschool students integrate with them meets that requirement of least restrictive environment for those students. And we wouldn't want to be, I, I wouldn't go on the record and say that as current law would, would, I would say, would probably say no, if we were to be taken to court that no, you can't just say they, they're close in age so they can be integrated. So if they took us to due process, we'd probably lose.
So it seems to me that it's very costly, but part of what we're looking at is that the building needs to be renovated anyway and it's partially a choice. It's not like we are building it just for these 24 kids as much as we have to renovate the building and we have space there that could potentially be a PK program. So the second part of that then is how, you know, would we fill the rooms? And I tend to think that, you know, if, if, if I was here, you know, when, when my kids were that age, I would have been horrified at the lack of all-day care in a spa, you know, there's a lot of parents that have to go to like two-hour programs. You just drive your kid and then you go back and pick them up. So I, I never really understood that. I am a strong supporter as a result of early childhood education that provides the support to families, particularly to parent-working families. So the question for me is what is the added cost really? Because if we have to renovate the building, any, you know, we have to renovate the building regardless of what we use it for. So, yeah.
Well, that's, that's where I was trying to kind of go with where this falls in, in priorities. Like, are there any other competing needs? Could they be flex spaces? You know, did, if there are 1,350 square-foot classrooms that meet, you know, preschool or TK size requirements? You, you know, could those be used for anything else? Say you have one preschool classroom and one SDC classroom, but now you've got another room that's 1,350. What are the needs for existing people and portables to go back into a real room, right? To try and look at one of our most outdated buildings and see it broadly, at least at this stage and juncture we're at. But I still, when I'm looking at the El Moro site plan, just to move the conversation along, we already programmatically have TK up and running. And we do, I think, need to prioritize that before P, PK, if we're going to call it that, or preschool. I think having unsweet restrooms, having playground renovations, having TK classrooms that connect, all of that to me is much higher priority and a renovation of that blue space is needed. I just, I don't, I don't agree with how it's programmed at this point.
So it sounds like the question isn't whether or not we should renovate the space, but how many of the spaces in that space will be devoted to PK?
Yeah, I was just asking, yeah.
Sounds to me like we're prioritizing.
Okay. The PK program, if we were signing off on, we want to renovate that building and where does that fall in priorities for El Moro? I would put it lower than K and TK. And I'd also like to come back and have a study session on the concept of PK. So we know what our, what we're encumbering future boards for in terms of having a whole nother program and, and study it. There's a lot of nuance to it that I'm not aware of yet, so.
Still, it still begs the question that Dr. Mayberry brought up about being not in compliance and that would need to be addressed.
I mean, I would like to support renovating the building and committing at least one room to PK because we want to be compliant.
Are we, we're talking about removing and replacing the whole building?
Are there any other board members that, at least within the El Moro plan, agree that, that if we looked at their items, that, that TK, K renovations, where it says UTK and kindergarten playground at a cost of $3 million is the highest priority to this board on that page? And I, I'm not sure, Mr. Zeta, if the playfield upgrades are related to the TK and K play, playfields at a cost of 3.5 million? Or if those are for the one through five playground?
I believe that cost is covered in, it's covered within the line item for the, the, the TK is those minor upgrades. If you wanted to be extensive, the outdoor learning areas could, could come in or site improvements could come into play there, just depending on the design scope, how it goes.
Yeah. So then the field improvements correlates with the playfield upgrade line item for budgetary purposes.
Yes.
So if this board said, we really want to prioritize our K and TK programs at this site, at moving those forward, then we would be looking at that cost of 3.162.
So are you suggesting that that's our, what, what you're saying is that would be our first priority? But the field upgrades and stuff would just, would also happen, but we're staging them.
Yeah, I think the best thing to do is use this cost, cost sheets because they kind of already break it down by project in generality. And so if we're talking about it within that context, that would help us kind of, you know, like schedule phases or stage whatever. I want to use over the 10-year plan, where, where the priority is within.
Joan, I think at El Moro, at close to $16 million, I'm looking at it project by project to say, what's, what's really important on this page to me personally, to see if there's any other consensus amongst board members.
The cafeteria, is that under site improvements?
That's under the new one-story building.
Yes, that's correct. It'd be under the new one-story building that's valued at 6.2 or 7 million? 6.7 million.
Because I think that's a priority also because it's an ongoing issue that affects everyone currently. I'm talking about new programs.
Jim, what, what are you referring to as the ongoing issue? Different services? And where would we stand with the, the portables that are there if we delayed addressing that?
On the, they've gone through DSA and they're permitted, so we can keep them as long as we need to. But the commitment was that they were temporary. They were placed for COVID and then we, under direction from the board, we're keeping them so that we have interim housing for the, the TK projects. That's where we kind of left that. That's our intended use as of today.
Mr. Dixon, does that give you enough direction from the board to?
I think that's good for El Moro. I think if we talk about the other sites, I can start piecing together what I'm hearing as far as overall priorities. And then I'll get, I'll clarify at the end to make sure I'm hearing correctly.
My understanding is you're not asking us to actually itemize the priorities, but just to give general, general guidance.
Correct. Yeah, we, we'll have a lot of opportunities to go through that as we go bring the plan back with the cash flow.
Thank you. Comfortable moving to discuss Top of the World? To the board, okay. For me, I would just say the similar issue is the need to be compliant with the TK mandate, which is coming soon.
And I strongly support the food service changes, which is really necessary at Top of the World.
Those of you.
At this site, we actually do have the itemized lunch shelter, kitchen, new restroom and food service and lunch shelter at a cost of close to $3 million.
Yeah, because it's a completely separate building, whereas at El Moro, it was all connected as a single building.
I got you. Okay.
I guess I missed, what would the old lunchroom be used for?
Currently, it would be used for any sort of support service needs. And also, a primary function that's been identified is a hallway connection from the, the campus into the NPR. Currently, the students go through the back door of the library and they pass through the library, which is somewhat disruptive to that learning environment. And then they go down the main hallway, past the reception, through that hallway and into the NPR. And so there's a lot of those functions that take place up in the administration area and you just have students all day long going back and forth. So they would definitely have a corridor as part of it that connects the school into the NPR. And then you get to rebuild out those spaces to meet all, all those current support needs that the schools have right now with the support services that are offered.
Okay. Previously, students could go in that way.
Well, they, they would pass through the kitchen if that was the case.
They might have done it, but they weren't supposed to.
So now it would be okay for them to go that way.
And we've been, been expanding on that space with the alcoves have been constructed this year to try to enhance, you know, the, the food service distribution in there. So I mean, it's a very tight space and I think health department-wise for food preparation, you probably are not supposed to be passing through there when they're preparing food for serving during the school day.
Correct. Yeah.
Board, board members, so we have this lunch shelter and kitchen modernization concept or vision, right? We have scratch food, we have dishwashing, we have healthier options. We have this vision at both sites in our 10-year plan. And we have TK and K classroom modernizations with unsweet bathrooms and better connections, faster transitions to playground. We know young kids need to play and they need to get to their playgrounds quickly. So I'm curious if there's a, if there's a priority amongst us between which ones of those occur first. I don't know that they occur together, or at least if there's a strong feeling that they occur together, I think we need to tell these guys that. Or if there's a strong feeling that one occurs before the other, we need to tell these guys that.
I, I think we, the board has to be careful because we have to phase things based off of what our team comes up with, right? So if you say, we want you to start with TK, but come back with a phasing plan of how this would look, I think that's an important piece that we can bring back in the master plan. Because if the board says, well, we'll start with this, then do this, then do this. But when we go to construct it, we're saying that doesn't work. We, we need to be able to do this, this and this because this is the flow. So I think if, if it's intended, and maybe the, the, our approach has been challenging because we're looking at it program by program versus site by site. And, and I almost feel like we almost have to look at it from a site and then say, okay, within the site, what's the interest that we want us to focus on? And then we'll, we can bring back a phasing of what that would look like. And if it's the totality of all of it, what it looks like over 10 years, we can front-load the first five on what you're interested in and then, you know, tail off the rest of it. But I think we need to be careful and, and kind of dictating to the staff like how it phases because that really gets complicated.
I'm not doing that, Dr. Valori. I just, I want to make this really clear. What I'm trying to get from the other four people on the dais here is, are we more interested in modernizing for TK and K? Or are you more interested in building new cafeterias?
I actually think that relatively speaking, it's not as expensive as most of the projects we're doing and they don't have a real kitchen there and we have to be TK compliant. So I don't know that I feel the need to choose one over the other.
Okay. So you're indifferent about either one or the other?
I would say based on Dr. Valori's comments, that the phasing with, with their work on that would tell us what we can accomplish.
I understand that, President. If anybody feels strongly about one or the other, like one is more important than the other.
I know, but it's really, if we pick, that's going to put them in a bind as far as when they look at phasing and resources, financing resources. And we don't, I don't, I don't want to put them in that bind.
Me personally, I think modernizing classroom facilities for TK and K students is more important than modernizing our cafeterias. So if that fits in, if modernizing the cafeterias fits in at the same time as the classrooms, that's great. But if it doesn't, I would, I would prioritize those programs that we've really worked hard to build out prior to cafeterias. So I just, I wanted that to be on the record, but you guys don't have to agree with me.
I think I already said that.
You for Thurston?
Yeah. I really support the gym expansion. We need to have bleachers so people can actually watch events there.
Yeah, I, I agree. I would put that first.
I also, as part of broader, maybe district discussions about reading and changes to technology, I think that we should think kind of holistically about the tech lab maker space library.
And my priorities are the black box enhancements and the renovated multimedia space because again, it affects current programming of students. And if you want to be on cutting edge for the future, those are really the areas that we need to be on top of.
Jim, I didn't catch what you said as the start. Which, 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 it was the black box?
I'm, I'm leaving it up to the superintendent. I, I support programming. And I just want to emphasize again that modern, the black box room is 20 years old or something like that. And the technology is kind of old and the, so that's, that's where I'm at is with the black box enhancement, the multimedia space.
And the gym enhancement includes necessary seismic updates?
Yeah, those would, those would have to be done as part of the, the improvements. You always have to bring the building up to current code. Luckily, the gym, I think, was 2003. Our gym here. So it's not, it's not significantly old. So it, it probably would not be that serious. But I'm sure our architect team would do an analysis with a structural engineer and that would get covered within that scope of work. And I believe they've already done that. I think they did some of that preliminary analysis and it, it was, it was minor in those requirements.
So you can bring us back some idea of how we might phase those projects. It seems to be it's kind of a, an equal on all of them.
That's okay. But these discussions really are valuable because at the site level, we're at least getting an idea on the priorities on how you would do that. And again, to Dr. Valori's point, we would find a way to phase the projects. And there's a lot of different ways to do that, but we haven't even started thinking about that until we've heard this. So this is, this is actually very helpful.
Any more discussion on the Thurston projects?
Can, can we also look into the lighting on the field?
Yes, took that. Thank you.
Any more discussion on Thurston or moved to the high school? Okay. Okay.
So, are we ready yet?
Yes, yeah.
I have a few comments about the high school. The first thing is I strongly support the administration counseling changes that we want to make for the students. I also want to respond to some of the comments from the community, which is that it's also the case in higher education where the number of people that we need to provide administration doesn't correlate with enrollments in part because sometimes there's administrative creep, but there's also, it's also true that the state increases regulations and the way we run schools and the way technology has changed schools really affects the way that we have administrative offices set up. So I don't think it's necessarily true that when, when enrollments dip, you have fewer administrators because administrators have particular tasks. And when I go into that office, I'm completely blown away by just how people are sitting on top of each other trying to meet basic student needs around enrollments and counseling and, you know, we have expanded counseling needs, significant expanded counseling needs. So I strongly support that as my first priority.
My priorities are upgrading the current codes, building codes. And then theater arts and visual lighting upgrades. I think, again, we have current programs going on and we should be focusing on supporting those programs. And then the theater AV because we do do an awful lot of theater productions and it's like going into the, the old ages when I go into that theater.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with Dr. Kelly. We are a very arts-based school, I'd say, at the high school. And I've heard from my fellow students that some of our shows are some of the best high school productions that they've ever seen. So I agree that having technology that's really up to standards could just make it all the better, all the better.
On the high school projects, I think we, because this administration building renovation was part of the last 10 year plan and got, I would say significantly delayed because of the COVID-19 disruptions. I think that combined with the fact that our students need much more intensive counseling services than they did 10 years ago, than they even did five years ago. We've all seen that in the data. The data is everywhere about student mental health, about the types of counseling they need, the extensiveness of it. And I, I would say that because we have not met our obligations to modernize the administrative building and that's kind of undone from the last facilities master plan and maybe five years overdue. I'm looking at when I first became a board member and the things that were on there were like the undone parts of the facilities master plan. So I think that's a high priority for me. And the rest of it, of course, is necessary, but if I had to pick the thing out, fortunately, it is the largest thing on the list, but I think we've done a really good job and a really extensive process and we should be doing the largest projects. We should tackle the hard things first.
I also want to mention, and this is slightly off topic, but formally that some of these changes at the high school and particularly the pool does affect the neighborhood. And, and I think people from Sensible Laguna have been extremely constructive in supporting, you know, talking through these changes and providing information. So when it does come time to design, I think that we should be really thoughtful about how we get community input, particularly around the pool, which is slightly off from what we're talking about. But, you know, I, it, it might be a good idea, I think, to have someone who represents the community to participate in those discussions. So I just want to put that out there as part of our planning as we move forward.
I would agree because the high school is, and the district office and the pool are all so close to homes. Elmore is kind of out there. You know, Thurston's a little removed, Top of the World's a little removed, they're not. They really highly affect people there and people going up the hill, the traffic. It's just a lot more impactful.
I also, for the facilities team on the, this admin building that we're talking about, I just wanted to extend some thanks because we have redesigned this a couple of times. We've pushed it back. We've, you know, we've really done a lot of work with Dr. Malchesky's point about trying to hear community feedback and respond to it to make this, you know, something that, that the people that live around there and the students are really proud of, that we're kind of moving into the, the, you know, the next generation of what counseling and student services looks like. So anyhow, thank you guys for all the revisions on that.
Any other comment or discussion on this site? We can cross the street to the district office? I think we listed it here with community feedback considerations for traffic light and noise, and we can just extend that to all of our sites. Even Elmore is probably the one that's really removed, but the others, over the years when we've done things, we've had concerns with top of the world neighbors. They are close enough and the same with Thurston. I mean, especially some of the homes right out on Park, they're, they're close enough to be impacted. And we have included them before and had district people meet with them and talk about their concerns. So I think that because we listed here, but we didn't list it in the other places, but to me it goes with all the work and I, and I know that since Jeff has been here and also Ryan, they do reach out. And part of it, part of it, when you're undergoing construction is to just keep the neighbors updated on where the project is, the status of it, what's coming, so that they are aware. That, that helps a lot. But as far as the design of the projects, that's where you get into mitigating noise and mitigating future impacts for when the project is, and similar to what Dr. Kelly said about making sure it's buffered of the noise from second floor to a first.
The other point I want to make again is in the five years I've been on the board, we've done eight projects, eight or nine projects on the last master plan. And I don't remember my email box being full at all as far as with anyone complaining. And it was done on time and it was done under budget. And I, I think we had the great people at the right time to be doing our facilities and I'm grateful for that.
I totally agree. I think some of our projects have not had the same kind of community impact. And as we said at the last meeting, we want to be very careful to get neighborhood impact work that's done and, you know, include the community around the planning. I think that's where the real issue is. So I think, I think we all.
So what do you have?
I think on the district office, you know, this has been studied extensively. I pulled out the feasibility studies from 2021, 2022. Here we are in 2023. It was in the facilities master plan before that. So I feel like we've really studied this, all the different ways to do it, to tear it down apart, to move it to a different place, to build it two stories, now to consolidate and, you know, bring down the square footage. So I don't see any issues with what's presented. It's just where it falls in the priority of the other site-based projects for me. That's the biggest challenge. You guys have done a great job with all the, the visioning and the, you know, the things that the community could get out of having a nicer boardroom that is a little more inclusive, has better technology, what have you, more training space. And it's really old. That second part of the district office building is really old and we want really good people, really bright people to come and work for our district. And, you know, they shouldn't be working in a closet with asbestos tile on the floor. So.
It's also the case that, you know, the tendency is to say we need to put the students first and those administrative offices don't matter. And you can do that for a long time until you can't anymore. So at some point districts have to bite the bullet and figure out how to create housing for our staff that accommodates running the district and getting the best staff people. So I don't know where it's going to come out in terms of budgeting in the end, but I do think that, you know, we, we have to be mindful that at some point that really old house that's been converted into offices, we need to take it on and, and create an office that is conducive to being a superintendent's office and staff. I know it's not just Jason we're talking about.
My comment, my comment three years ago, when this was brought up and they were going to do $900,000 of upgrades and I said, you're crazy. It's not going to cost you that and it needs to be all torn down. So I keep that stance and I'm glad we have a, a modern program for our district offices.
Yeah, this is another area where we've really had a lot of community input. You know, we thought originally trying to think outside of the box, maybe we could pick up some synergies and pick up some real estate to be able to just co-locate it with high school administration. You know, we're a small district. People tell us that all the time. Maybe we could all fit on the second story across the street and have that other real estate for something else. You know, but there was a lot of really strong feedback against that. And so I think, you know, here we are back at the original plan, but at least we brought that out to the community and really tried to flush out what, what people might prefer. So.
And we did try to move to St. Catherine's.
It was, that was presented. That we would have needed almost the entire site to house our administrative needs.
I remember before you were on the board, but we looked into buying the property next door so we could expand and
you as a sole person just supported it.
We, we didn't, we didn't want to offer enough money. We didn't come.
Yeah, and I think to remember Parrish's point, I mean, this conversation's been going on related to the offices. When you got right, got on the board right away and they had conversations that proceeded even my time where there was, I think Jeff had worked through iterations and before that even. So it's, it has been a topic for, for many, many years and you know, right now we're, we're about 30-ish to 34, depending on where, you know, who would, would come back from being at a school site. But just to be clear, those aren't administrators. Those are, those are classified staff, support staff that are payroll, account technicians, et cetera, that regardless of the number of students you have, that you still have to pay people, you still have to account receivable, accounts payable, budgeting, et cetera. So that we run a pretty kind of lean group down there, especially in the little house. Just the way it's designed, you know, I think there's two restrooms down there. Neither one of them are ADA compliant. We have two restrooms in then, in our building. And I don't know that either one of them are necessarily ADA compliant. So we definitely need to find a way and we've pushed off doing any sort of changes to that, those buildings over, other than some maybe internal little office things here and there so that we can accommodate needs. But we haven't done anything because we don't want to waste taxpayer dollars on ripping out a bathroom. If the board says, hey, we're going, we want you guys to redo some, to do something bigger. So we've been trying to be mindful of that. So we, we do need to, when we bring it back, really kind of figure out where in the priority everything falls. So we can, we can, I think, have enough to kind of bring back at the next facility master plan. And the nice part about the social master plan is that every year we bring it back to you. We, we bring it back as an info item for discussion. If things priority shift, we want to move something around. This will give us a real good kind of, I think, runway of which to start. And, you know, where, where things can fall into place and with funding, et cetera, how that might happen. So I think we've done a nice job. And if you have questions after or something that pops into your head after tonight and you're wandering around, please let us know. I mean, if there's history of things that you want to have a better understanding of as well, we could also obviously try to go back into the, into the books and find out some of that information. You know, I'm interested and intrigued about some of the ages, the age of the house, for example. I don't even think we have records on some of that stuff, but we might be able to access some of that from the city and ask them, maybe they know how old that, that house is, but or how we got it, right? So. Right, right. So and we, and again, with some of the stuff that we've done, adding the family resource center, that offloaded a couple of staff into another location so that we don't have to have offices. That was part of the scaling down. The other part of it is a boardroom takes up a, a square footage, right? And so to Amber Osborne's point, one of the adjacency conversations was, could we have something that students could use? And that was one of the conversations we had around potentially co-locating. But we heard loud and clear that wasn't an interest of, and so we made that shift back. But if the intention is for us to host board meetings back in a boardroom and to convert this space potentially a little bit too, then, you know, we have to have a place to go. So to, to my point, just around kind of phasing of projects, that's where we kind of have to look at those things and make sure we have a place to go. We're a host meetings. But also what do we do? We displace people. So if the intent is to have the, you know, high school offices go at a certain point, we need to think about interim housing and what are the implications around that? And then does that mean that we as district office staff potentially move out so that some of the high school administrative staff could move in? So that they're close, obviously they need to be co-located with the high school. Those are, so there's a lot of like dominos that we have that we're all trying to factor and think about. And so that, that's, staff will work on all that and try to get back something. I think our goal will be in the November meeting, we can bring it back as kind of an info, see if we're all on track with the FMP and then bring it back for approval December. I know Dr. Malcheski might not be at the November meeting, so I don't want to, I think all boards should be, if at all possible, seated when we have this discussion. So I'm okay if we bring it back as an info in November and then an action kind of. Again, it's going to be back on the action and info, info action item in January, the following, you know, year after we do this. So it won't be something that will, will be locked into stone. So.
Oh no, I'm sorry. Does that satisfy, satisfy most of the concerns going forward as far as what Dr. Gloria is sharing?
Sorry, Jen, could you say your question again?
Does that satisfy most of the concerns with phasing and potential projects? And talking about interim housing and as far as going forward from tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the board discussed much about where, for example, like counseling versus pool versus TK or K versus district office, right? Those are four big, huge buckets. I don't imagine that the team is going to take those all on simultaneously. So I think if they want direction from the board on, for example, which of those four we might want to start with first, that would probably need to be a discussion the board has that we haven't had yet tonight. But if we're all tired because it's eight o'clock.
No, it's not that it's eight o'clock. I think we already said before that that's not what the expectation is of us because that puts a burden on them then to, you know, they're going to look at phasing and revenue sources and bring that information back to us, which will tell us the feasibility of what could be done simultaneously and what needs to be more phased out.
And, and funding. So I think the key also is, is, is when funding windows open. So that's what we can take back. We know where your interests lie and then we can come back with, here's how we think we can do these in this kind of order, funding wise. And if there's something that you want us to move around for, we can see if we can do that. But I think it will give us, it gives us a starting point around where the board's interests in terms of the focus first is, which obviously is, you know, the TK piece. But, and then if we look at the high school, again, talking about the district office, we may come back to you and say, we think you should, if we're going to do this, we should do this first because of the, you know, adjacencies of how this will all play out. So, you know, that's going to be an important piece, right, that we have to kind of bring back. So I think we can bring all of that back to you in terms of kind of a general plan of how we think we can do it. We can't to, to your point, we can't do all of them at once. We don't have the money to do all of them at once either. So that's the other piece that we really want to factor in. So I think we can come back with based on what we have so far, work with the architects and, and look at funding. And then, you know, some of it may be something that we say, we don't have funding right now. And so we'll have to come up with another, another plan of how to accomplish that in the out years. So.
And in addition to the funding, say that we had unlimited funding and it was just a matter of saying, if we were to pick the district office and the high school administration and the pool to all start at once, that's a big impact on a neighborhood all at one time. So I think if you can include some of that as far as the projected length of a project, I mean, I know it's a guesstimate, but I think you've already, I've already asked that question like with the pool and, and getting approvals and design and you'd be looking at at least a year and a half before you could start.
Yeah, we, we've talked about all that info, so we already have it. We'll bring it back. So for
So for reference, and yeah. In tonight's discussion, to Dr. Gloria's point, this is enough for us to make beginning a draft for the board review, which I think will be a lot easier than trying to hypothetically prioritize in your head without even knowing how the resources fall. So this was good.
Yeah, I think also, this was the question I was asking earlier about how the process plays out. And it's an iterative process where you come to us with information, design happens, costs are changed, revenues are determined, and then it gives us more to go on. I couldn't prioritize everything from one to 20 if I wanted to right now, because I don't feel that I have the information that's necessary.
Is anything else that anyone feels they'd like to discuss before we adjourn?
If we adjourn.
Is there a second student vote?
In favor.
All board members on favor? I oppose. There is 5-0. Thank you.